I want to call this meeting to order. We will have the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Please bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we ask for your blessings during this meeting, and we humbly ask that you provide and protect all the families in Mission and in this area that were affected by the heavy rains last week. Thank you, Lord, for placing good people in our city. We appreciate all their efforts in bringing residents to safety and for their continued work in providing assistance to our families. May we always be deserving of your mercy and love, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll call for the report of the chamber. Mr. Rossell, please.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. In terms of recent events, I only have one event to share with you today, and that's that last week our Chamber of Commerce won second place at the annual state chamber conference for our co-mission marketing campaign, and so wanted to share that with the council today.
Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much. In terms of upcoming events, tomorrow we have scheduled a new and potential member orientation from 11:30 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. We will be sharing all the benefits of being a chamber member as well as upcoming events that we have here in the near future. On Wednesday, June 27th, we'll partake in a grand opening ribbon cutting for a new building that our member DHR will be opening. The event is scheduled to begin at 10:00 a.m., which will take place at the Medical Office Building there in the DHR compound in Edinburgh. On July 24th, we'll be hosting a grand opening for our member Five Five Brewery. The event will take place at 801 North Bryant Road, Mission, Texas, at the seed building, and the ribbon cutting is scheduled for 2:00 p.m. sharp. On Tuesday, July 17th, we'll be hosting a ribbon cutting for Maria Grajeva, Apple Designs, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., with the ribbon cutting occurring at 11:00 a.m. promptly. The event will take place at 1242 East Business 83, Suite 1, Mission, Texas, and so hopefully y'all can join us for that particular event. On July 20th, we'll be hosting another ribbon cutting for one of our newest members, El Tisoncito. The event will take place from 12:00 p.m. to 1:00 p.m., with the ribbon cutting occurring at 12:00 p.m. sharply. The event will take place at 201 South Sherry Road, Suite 100, Mission, Texas. And then last on today's agenda is a ribbon cutting scheduled for Azure Financial Group, which will occur on Thursday, July 26th, from 10:30 a.m. to 11:30 a.m., with the ribbon cutting occurring at 11:00 a.m. sharp. The event will take place at 1909 West Mile 3, and that's Suite 600 here in Mission, Texas. Any questions?
Any questions?
Thank you.
No, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you. I'll call for the department reports. Anybody has any questions directly to our departments, feel free to ask.
I move to accept as presented.
There's a motion to accept the department reports as presented in writing?
Second.
We have a second, and this I open it for discussion in case anybody wants to discuss. No discussion? Questions have been called for? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. At this time, I open it for citizens' participation. Anybody from the audience that would like to approach us on items that are not on the agenda, and you will have a limit of three minutes. Anybody wants to address the -- state your name and your address for the record, please.
Isabel Trevino. I'm here representing my parents, 125 Wild Lopez Street. Roberto and Odilia Trevino. Mr. Mayor, City Council, Martin, Mr. City Attorney, respected staff and citizens of Mission. Usually, when I see the city of Martin City, we usually come here and have concerns of the city. I'm just here to say thank you today. My parents, we've lived 40 years there on Wild Lopez Street. We had it very close. We're a half inch from getting water there. That area there, the Lopez Lial subdivision, is just south of First Street. You go down Conway and Lopez Park. There's about 100, there's close, probably 50 to 80 homes there, mostly senior citizens, retired people like my parents. So, and it's very dear, and there's a lot of passion in that old neighborhood, but no one's there anymore, just the parents. I was not surprised that by 11 o'clock, under the supervision of the mayor's office and Martin's office, I'm sorry, I just blanked out, como se llama, we already had a boat in front of my parents' house. We don't see that every day in South Mission, a boat in front of your house. About eight families got evacuated. We just want to say thank you for that, give them some peace of mind. I was not surprised by the coronation of the police department and the fire department and the streets and public works, but I do believe there were some unsung heroes, and that's the main reason I'm here today. And the only reason that was brought to my attention because a dear friend of Martin and I, Raúl Niño, had contacted Martin about sandbags, and then Martin about 15 minutes later got back, he was busy with the water and sewer, the water, the sewer plant. You know, we all see police cars out there doing traffic control, and we see the fire department doing rescue, and we see everybody doing the sewer hole, the sewer tap holes. We see everything, but we do not see what happened under the direction of Mr. Salinas with the water plant and the sewer plant. My parents got very little sewer backup on the shower. They could not flush the toilets. But I can tell you, if it would have got worse, or lack of leadership, or lack of training on those people, it could have gone ugly. We could have contaminated water, and we could have massive sewer backups. Thanks to the leadership, that didn't happen, and for that, I just want to say thank you and make sure those people were not overlooked for their services. Thank you, you have a good day.
Thank you.
Any other person would like to address the council, the item that is not on the agenda, and like I said, you have a limit of three minutes. Please state your name and your address, please, for the record.
Pam Garcia.
Albert Garcia.
1412 Dora Jean. We live in the corner of Stewart and Pamela. Our front yard and our backyard was a river. We've been here for 19 years. I'm a Mission resident, okay? We're faithful to Mission, we're taxpayers. We don't have contacts like the gentleman does. We don't know anybody on the board, okay? We are here because enough's enough. Mission on Stewart Road has been well-known for years that we flood. There's a little rain, we flood. What are we going to do when there's a hurricane? We're in a well-developed neighborhood. Our streets weren't blocked, there were continuous traffic there that pushed water on fences. You go down Stewart Road, anybody that has a fence right now that's wood is dropped down. There's no traffic control. Those cars that were stranded were floating. That could cause injury to our homes, injury to our loved ones. What are we going to do? What is it going to take? You want change, Dr. Mayor? We want change too. We don't want to live our house, we don't want to leave our house. We own our home, we're mortgage owners. We're proud of that, but what are we going to do next? There was no early sandbag release. There was no early sandbag release. Sandbag release was distributed after the fact. What are we going to do? I mean, seriously, what are we going to do? It's not unknown for the city of Mission that Stewart, on the corner of Pamela and Stewart, it's not unheard of that that corner floods. It's not unheard of. It's not new news. What are we going to do? I don't know who here in the board, I don't have contacts, but I'm a taxpayer, and I'm a city loyal resident here in Mission.
The only thing I can tell you, ma'am, and I'm not supposed to respond to your issues, but our city manager is available for you, you know, to be able to discuss the issues, but we are going to address the issues. If you look at the agenda, we do have an item on the agenda where we're going to ask for permission from the council to be able to get a engineer to look at the issues, and Stewart is one of our priorities.
We've been told that before, sir. I mean, again, it's frustrating because it's an investment, it's our kids' home, and what we saw this past weekend is not something to take very lightly. We live in the Gulf side of, if a hurricane comes, it's catastrophic, to say the least. I mean, we're at your mercy. We need help, we need change, and change is what we need in the city of Mission, and it needs to start somehow, somewhere.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else that would like to address the council?
Arturo Campos, 1404 Garage Jean Drive, neighbors of Pam and Albert. Same concerns, same concerns. I've been there for 18 years or so, 19 years. I was not raised here in Mission. I moved to Mission, you know, later on in life. Since I've been there, we've probably gone through floods, not as bad as we got last week, but I would say a good four times, okay? This last time, when I got home at 4:00 o'clock, there was still water on Dora Jean and on Stewart. Whether the pump, water pump was working on Stewart and 83, I do not know, okay? I did not see any barricades, you know, blocking the flow of the traffic. My fence, which several of our neighbors, we lost our fence, okay? That comes out of our pocket, which I've done before on previous floods. I have to repair the fence, and a lot of that has, or a lot of that comes from not blocking or patrolling the flow of the traffic. You've got these big toy trucks going through there like nothing at all, right? So what do they do? They create those waves and knock our fence down, okay? And it just ripples to the other homes across the street, okay? It is a concern. Again, I've been there for 18 years, this is probably about the fourth time that it has happened. I know the city has worked on the drainage two or three times since I've been there. I don't see it working. I just don't see it working, okay? We have drainage. Is it working? I have no idea. We have a water pump. Is it working? I don't know. Was it turned on? I don't know how that stuff works, but something needs to be done. Something needs to be done. I got hit from the front and from the back of the house. One more inch, yeah, it would have been bad. It went into the garage, it was all the way to the door, on the front of the house and on the back of the house, okay? Something needs to be done, seriously.
We will address it, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Maria Strupina. It's very frustrating, and it was a very heavy amount of rain, 12.52 inches in seven hours, and I know, I hear a lot of frustrations. I am a Lions Club member. We had some of our families who had major flooding in their homes, and they are panicked, and I'm saying, call the city hall, call the Martin Garson's office. One of my concerns was one of his family members, there was so much water in their house, they had to pick him up, rescue him out, but she has a child or a son with autism. So when they took him to the shelter, this person cannot handle the different change and everything, so I would like to recommend that in the future there be some kind of facility to assist families with special needs children. Another thing was pre-scouting, and I did address the city manager, Dr. Ogunna, and they were pre-scouting up to almost $500 for cars that had gotten off the road, had fallen into ditches, and I have pictures of it. They were charging almost $484. The key was left in there, they had to take the ladies out. Of course, they had an argument on, and then there was a man seen cold, and they endorsed it, but I think one of my fears, like everybody's saying here, we didn't deliver water, but not that much, but we need to be appropriately prepared, but I think one of my main concerns is housing or appropriate shelter for persons with special needs. Thank you. But I think the city did a great job in assisting, and yeah, we still have issues, but thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else want to address the citizens' participation? State your name and address, please.
Hi, I'm Sherri Barash. I am with All Hands Volunteers. We're here, we arrived last night into Mission. We are coordinating with the county emergency manager and with Deanne, who is the EFF6 person for volunteers. We are a nonprofit organization. We respond to disasters around the world, and we are here and been assigned to see what we can do to help Mission. We provide the free cleanup, and there is no charge for anything we do, free cleanup to homeowners that need help with removing the debris, gutting their home, sanitizing it for mold. The county, I know, is getting ready to release a number that people can call for help if, until that's released, if you know people that need assistance.
Thank you.
We have flyers in both English and Spanish with us. We provide all of the equipment that's needed, the expertise for how to do it, as well as if there are people in the community that want to join us and help their own community, we are glad to take them under our leadership, provide the equipment, provide their personal safety equipment as well, the tools, the job, and put our team leaders over them so that they can help their own community and do it effectively and safely. So we just want to help. We've been out all day long talking to people and trying to find the areas and the people that need the help. So far, we have not come across anyone. Everyone says they're fine, can take care of themselves. We want to offer our services if you can use us as a referral source. You can check with the state. Everyone else, we are very well-recognized and known, like I said, around the world. So, do you want to say anything? Any questions or anything from the citizens?
Can we put this information on our website?
Absolutely. First of all, I want to thank you all for being here. It's a great news that you're here. We do have a couple of residents that I know that I personally received calls through over the weekend. Most of them elderly that they can't actually do physical work and be able to remove some of the debris, so I'm going to be making sure that we contact you with them as well, but Charlie, if you can help us with media relations and sending this out. And once again, thank you for helping us out, and how long are y'all going to be here? Is there a...
According to the need, you know, we say we're one of the first to enter and the last to leave, and we plan on being here. Once we get a base location to where we can bring our volunteers in, right now we're just 15 initial, but we will build up to about 40 volunteers or so, and according how long people need help, as to how long we'll be here.
Very good. And a number to get ahold of you, is the 978 number?
That number, and if you want to speak to myself personally, then you've got my card for my cellphone number.
Very good. How about a location? Do you all have a space right now where y'all are staying, where y'all are setting up a camp, or...
Yeah, Airbnb sponsors us, so for one week, we have an Airbnb here in Mission. The 15 of us are staying in, but in order, like I said, to be able to bring in rest of our volunteers, then we need to find, most of the time, it's a church. We just throw air mattresses on the floor. We do have our own shower trailers we can pull in. We need a facility to cook for ourselves. We're self-sustaining.
Great. We have a director's meeting tomorrow at 8:30. I welcome you to be part of the meeting. We can just discuss with the directors. I know some of the directors have addresses and people that they've spoken to, and so maybe we can get together during that meeting and discuss the action plan for your help.
Sounds great.
Would that be okay?
Yes.
That would be here in this building at 8:30 in the morning?
8:30? Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Any other person wants to address the council under the citizens' participation? Anybody else wants to address citizens' participation? If there's nobody else, then we'll move along with the agenda, and I'm going to be calling for the public hearing, 1.1 Planning and Zoning Recommendations and 1.1A Conditional Use Permit Home Occupation, Registered Home Provider. We do have a table item, and I need to know whether any of the council would like to make a motion to bring the table item to the discussion, or do we let it...
Is the applicant here?
Is the applicant here?
Yes, the applicant is here.
I move to remove the item from the table.
I have a motion to remove the item from the table. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second has been called for. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The item has been removed from the table, and the Conditional Use Permit Home Occupation, Registered Home Provider will be discussed. Mr. Acevedo?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 1.1A is a public hearing to consider a Conditional Use Permit for Home Occupation. This is for a registered home provider at 2003 West 40th Street, Bean Lot 68 of Torres Estates, Number 9, Phase 3 subdivision. The property is owned R1, and the applicant is Eliana Faride. And if the council is inclined to approve this Conditional Use Permit, it would require the adoption of an ordinance. On June 13, 2018, the Planning and Zoning Commission held a public hearing to consider this Conditional Use Permit. The subject is located near the Hillcrest Drive and 40th Street intersection along the south side of 40th Street. If approved, the applicant is planning to convert her living room and one bedroom into the daycare facility. The proposed hours of operation are Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. to 6:30 p.m. and Saturday from 8:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. The applicant and one other adult will manage the operation. There was no public opposition during the PNC meeting. The board unanimously recommended approval. Staff is recommending approval, subject to a one-year reevaluation in order to monitor this new facility. We're also recommending that the applicant be DHS certified and that they comply with the home occupation portion of the zoning code. This section of the zoning code just limits the applicant to a one sign affixed to the door, being a one-by-one sign. They can't have a huge banner or a huge ground pole sign. They're limited to a one-by-one sign affixed to the building. We're also requesting that they obtain a business license. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. This is a public hearing item. Item 1.1A is now before you.
And this I open it for any discussion for or against the item? It is open for the public. Anybody that wants to talk in favor or against, please approach the podium, please.
Good afternoon again, Maria Strupina. Last time I was very concerned because they just want to convert the living room and the bedroom. I heard nothing about the bathroom being converted. I heard nothing about the ages of the children. I am an education specialist. I saw nothing for outdoor leisure time recreational participation, so I had a lot of questions. Are they just going to receive the children, just stay in the living room and the bedroom? No details on the bathroom and outdoor facilities for the children to play. So that's a major concern I have, and being a returning All-American, all-inclusive town, I feel that they're very lacking, and I would like to hear some more details about this home. Thank you.
Anybody else in favor or against this Conditional Use Permit? The applicant, is the applicant here? There's some direct questions the council had in the last meeting that I want to address with you.
Yes, sir.
Just state your name and your address for the record.
My name is Eliana Faride. My address is 2003 West 40th in Mission.
Thank you. Any questions?
I guess one of the questions that we had is how many children do you plan to...
Under this license, I can only have a max of up to 12. It depends as well on the ages. Depending on the amount of babies is the amount of after-schoolers I can have, so if there's too many babies, they can't, there can't be too many older kids. And I can only have up to six toddlers, like before they go to school. There will be a restroom. My house has two restrooms. One of them will be used for that. If there is more space needed, we will convert another bedroom into part of the space for the children as well.
Are you familiarized with ADA for, excuse, for all the children with disabilities, to make sure it's ADA compliance?
Not that part, no. I am going to school to become a teacher, so I went to, I have like training, the state does require me to get CPR certified, first aid certified, and there's a procedure I have to go through with them before they even give me the license, so it's not like I could just open and that's it. There's procedures I have to go through and all of that stuff.
I think last week we talked about what type of safeguards you were going to have, because there's a lot of glass and a lot of sharp objects in the living room.
Yes, those tables, well, they can easily be removed. Like I mentioned, the state does require me to go through like safety standards with them, like all the little outlets have to be covered, my cabinets have to have like the children's lock as well, like the fridge and all that stuff that kids can get into. We have to, the state goes in there and they verify everything and they, before they even give me permission to open. This is the first step to get through that. I already submitted my paperwork with them, so I'm waiting for an appointment with them. They can go in there and check. I have to have a fire extinguisher, the alarm, and all of that stuff has to be installed.
How long have you lived in this home?
I've been there since 2013.
And do you have some of your neighbors that are going to go seek your services, or they don't know that you're going to open?
I wanted to get, I'm sorry, go through the whole procedure first, make sure that I was able to open, and then take it from there. I did speak to like my front door neighbor, because she has kids, and I told her I'm going to this, if you need it. I first have to go finish everything, and then, of course, if you need me, I'm here across the street, but other than that, I haven't spoken to my next-door neighbor, the other one, so I wanted to get this done first and then everything else.
Can I see the picture of the living room again, please? So you're planning to have your activities in the living room?
Yes, I do have backyard space as well. If approved, I will have like a little porch set up so that, for the sign and all that stuff, so. I have three kids, myself, living there, and it's, the living room is a big space. The bedroom, the bedroom I will be using is, también, it's not that small for babies, for the little cribs and stuff, so, I mean, space-wise, the living room is...
So you're going to, I guess my concern is that you're basically converting your home into a daycare center, because the living room is your central living area of the home. And so if you're going to, you know, have little cribs and beds and...
I live myself with my girls. I'm not, I'm not, I'm separated, so there's not like, I don't, I would say, need that much privacy. I have my own bedroom, so that would be like my space.
Like, how are you going to keep the kids from going, wandering around your home, the rest of the house?
I mean, like, the other bedroom would be used for them. My room, which is, you can't see the door, but it's like through there.
There's a, there's a person standing right there in that picture that's, is that your...
No, that's a friend of mine. He was, he stopped by.
No, no, I'm just saying, is that your, are those the bedrooms?
No, that's the, my daughter's bedroom, and then you have the restroom right across from, or he's standing across from that door, and then the other bedroom right there. There's two bedrooms and the restroom right there.
Okay.
I have a question, Mayor, but for our director.
Okay, listen.
Mr. Acevedo, so how many of these type of daycares do we have in our city right now?
We have them throughout the city. I would say we have more than 10 of them in operation here today.
Okay, and when they originally were given permission to have this type of business, how much do we give them? Like, those 10 are a life of use, or they...
No, we give them a year, and then they come back in a year, and then once the first year is over, we usually give them a three-year revaluation, and then every three years afterwards, we give them another three years.
We don't have no life of use on these type of home occupations. We always want to be monitoring, so at the very least, the second time around is three years and three years after that.
Okay.
And three of the kids that she will take care of are her...
And three of the kids that she will take care of are her kids. So in essence, she only has room for an additional nine kids.
Are your, are the ages of your children the same ages of the children you're going to be?
Yes, the state does require if they're older than 14, they go through a background check. Anybody else living there would have to get a background check, but like I mentioned, it's just myself. My oldest daughter is eight years old.
Okay.
Any other information on the public hearing? Anybody against or for? Anybody against or for? Anybody against or for? And this asks the council to either adopt the ordinance 4646, approving 1.1A, for approval as recommended by the planning and zoning and staff for one year. Do I hear a motion?
I still have a concern about the area not being separated from the home. That's my concern.
I will entertain a motion either for or against, however you feel.
Okay.
Do you have a garage by any chance?
Yes, I do.
Okay. And one of the reasons why that is a concern, because most of the cases that we've seen is the garages are, are converted into a living space that is separate and away from your home space where you can conduct that home occupation, right? And so, and so when you're bringing something to us where one of the bedrooms to your home is going to be used also as a business, that brings a lot of questions to the table. And so if you do have a garage and maybe be able to, to convert the garage into air-conditioned and, and living area, I think that would be a lot easier for, for the council to make a, a better choice for you and your family and, and the business that you're trying to open. And so I don't know, that's something that might want to be considered.
With that being said, Mayor, I move to deny the request for the conditional use permit.
We have a motion to deny. Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second? Your motion dies, board like a second. Do I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve for the one year.
We have a motion to approve the ordinance 4646. Do I hear a second?
I'll second, Mayor, but yeah, I would prefer it be in the garage though. But I'll second it conditionally on, on that.
Maybe we can, subject to that.
Do you want to add the condition to, to your second that, that it be not in the living area and be at the garage?
I don't have a problem with the living area. It's the bedroom that I have a problem with. That's, it's, I mean, the living room can be converted kind of like a garage as well, but the bedroom is what I can have a problem with.
I speak with the applicant prior to the meeting and she says that she was going based on the counsel that she was given by the Department of Human Services. She would be receptive to doing it in the garage.
Yeah.
Maybe the garage, I will feel more comfortable too.
We have a motion and a second to accept it with the condition that it be done in the garage. Are you in agreement with that, ma'am?
Yes.
Do I hear for any other further discussion? Questions have been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries with the condition.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Good luck.
I call for the public hearing 1.1B, public hearing for draft five-year consolidated plan and strategy for 2018, 2022, proposed annual action plan for, for fiscal year 18 and dash 19. Ms. Mungia.
Yes. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council members. This public hearing is to solicit comments on the draft five-year consolidated plan and strategy 2018, 2022, and the proposed annual action plan fiscal year 2018, 19, for the Community Development Block Grant Program, otherwise known as CDBG. The 30-day comment period ends on July 2, 2018. The consolidated plan and strategy establishes the goals and objectives for the use of CDBG funding by identifying the needs and priorities of the city. The annual action plan describes the proposed activities recommended by the Citizens Advisor Committee on May 29, 2018. The 2018 CDBG allocation is $960,474 and the activities include Silver Ribbon, $6,000, Amigos del Valle, $26,000, which is for meals, home-delivered meals, and senior activities. Area Agency and Aging, $7,000, Easter Seals, $4,000, Children's Advocacy Center, $9,000, Casa of Hidalgo County, $2,000, the Housing Assistance Program, $675,000, Housing Administration, $83,000, Program Administration, $148,474, and Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
And this I open it for the public hearing. Anybody would like to provide direct input, either for or against this action plan? Anybody from the audience would like to provide, and, and any comments? Anybody from the audience would like to provide any comments on the action plan? If no comments are made, then I will close this public hearing. There is no net action needed in this, in this. We just wanted to solicit input and the public hearing has been closed. Thank you. Now I will call for 2.0, disposition of minutes, 2.1, special meeting in City Council of June 18, 2018. Mr. Carrillo?
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to, to approve the, the disposition of minutes. And this I open it for further discussion. No discussions? And then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move to 3.0, acknowledgement of receipt of minutes of the Park and Recreation Department of May 8, 2018, the Traffic Safety Committee of May 1, 2018, the Mission Economic Development Corporation of April the 18, 2018, and Spear Memorial Library, May 15, 2018. Do I hear a motion?
I move to approve the knowledge receipt of minutes.
Do I hear a second?
Second, Mayor.
We have a motion and second to acknowledge the receipts of the minutes as read. And this I open it for further discussion. No discussion? And the, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now I call for the approval and authorization of 4.1, a resolution 1556, designating Hidalgo County Metropolitan Planning Organization member. Ms. Carrillo?
Yes, Mayor, Council. Good afternoon. Section 2A of the HCMPO bylaws and operating procedures states that each governmental entity is represented by three members of the governmental entity, one of whom shall be the mayor by virtue of his position, and the other two appointed by the governmental entity by force of resolution. All three represent the governmental entity in any and all MPO policy committee meetings, but only one may exercise the right to vote. The current primary alternate is City Manager Martín Garza Jr. and the proxy is Mr. Roberto Salinas, Public Works Director. This item is now before you.
Thank you, ma'am. I would like to open it for discussion. Are you, the council okay with the City Manager Martín Garza Jr. and being the alternate and Public Works Director? I would like to solicit, to see if any of this council people would like to be the alternate or the director or the, or the tertiary one. I will open it. Anybody willing to?
I would like to get more involved.
Anybody else?
As far as getting involved?
Yes.
I wouldn't mind attending the MPOs.
Okay. The only thing is rest assured that we're going to need your presence on the, on the meetings of the MPO in the absence of the mayor.
Okay.
Are we in agreement with that?
Yes, of course. If Jessica wants to do it, just point.
So the current primary alternate would be Jessica Ortega Ochoa and the proxy, and the secondary one would be Gus Martinez. And do I hear any other discussions? Are we okay with that?
Yes. I move to approve as discussed.
I have a motion to approve as presented. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. And I'd like to add that our presence to this committee is very crucial for the future of Mission. I do want for you to attend those meetings.
Okay, absolutely, sir.
And, also, so. 4.0, Board Appointment, the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Yes, Mayor, Council. This appointment is to replace a position vacated by Dr. John Guerra who resigned. Mayor Carha's recommendation is to appoint Mr. Hector Moreno and this term would be to expire 12/31 of 2020. This item is now before you.
Before we get the vote, I would like to ask Mr. Hector Moreno to please stand up so our, our people in the audience and as well as live TV, live Facebook can see who, who's going to be representing us in this planning and zoning commission. And at that point, I will ask for a motion.
Move to approve.
Do we have a motion?
Second.
A second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Mr. Moreno, you want to say a few words?
Mayor, City Council, I'd just like to say that I'm grateful and thankful for the opportunity of being raised in Mission. Never thought I would give, given the opportunity to serve on a board for the city, so I would like to say I'm thankful for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Welcome on board.
Welcome. I will call for the item 4.3, authorization to execute second one-year renewal optional with Lincoln Financial. And this, Ms. Mungia.
Yes, good afternoon, Mayor and Council. Item 4.3 is the authorization to execute second one-year renewal option with Lincoln Financial. This will be our second renewal option with them. There are no increase in rates as per the original proposal and Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the authorization to execute the second one-year renewal option with the Lincoln Financial. I'll open it for discussion. I have no discussion. And this I open it for a vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Authorization to execute first year, one-year renewal option with Blue Cross Blue Shield of Texas, 4.4, item.
Yes, Mayor and Council. This will be our first renewal option with Blue Cross Blue Shield. There will be a 0.5 increase in rates as per the original proposal and Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Do I have a motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Opening for discussion. Any questions? Any questions, director? No questions. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mungia. Inter local agreement between the City of Mission, Texas and the City of Alton, Texas regarding the use of the animal control facility. Mr. Zapata.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. City of Alton is requesting the renewal of its inter local agreement for initial one-year period. The fees will remain the same, $70 per animal, and the $200 fee will apply if the animal needs to be quarantined. Both Staff and City Manager approve.
Do I hear a motion to accept the inter local?
So moved.
Second.
First and second to accept the renewal of the inter local agreement of an additional one year for the City of Alton. And this I open it for discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. And motion carries, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Chief Dominguez, approval of the implementation of two speed bumps or speed humps.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. Item 4.6 is the approval for the implementation of two speed humps on Rio Grande Drive between Frigill Street and Red River Drive in accordance with the City Mission Code of Ordinance, Division 5, Speed Humps, Section 110, 351 to Section 110, 354. The Homeowners Association of Simran Inc. met and approved for the filing of an application to the City Mission for speed humps off of Rio Grande Drive. On June 19, the Traffic Safety Committee met and reviewed the request after the City Mission Planning Department and Street Department reviewed the application for compliance with our city ordinance. It is a recommendation of the Traffic Safety Committee to implement the installation of the speed humps. If approved, the City Mission will install the speed humps and then bill the Homeowners Association of Simran Inc. for said installation. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
We have a motion and second to approve the implementation of two speed humps. And this I open it for further discussion. Questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. 4.7, authorize the purchase of a 4-40 cubic yard heavy-duty rectangular roll-off.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I'll be presenting this item for Mr. Rutiérrez. Item 4.7 is the authorization to purchase four cubic yard heavy-duty roll-off containers through waste equip via buy board, contract number 516-16, for the City Sanitation Department. Staff is, is requesting the purchase of these roll-offs through buy board and they will be used for our incinerator area and also our sanitation site. Staff recommendation at this time is, is the authorization to purchase these roll-offs.
I open it for motion to entertain. We have a motion to entertain the authorization of the purchase and, and second, and this I open it for further discussion. No discussion. Questions have been called for. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
4.8, May 2018, financial statement, Ms. Venda.
Good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Item 4.8 is the approval of the May 2018 financial statements. The adjusted beginning fund balance was $22,122,466. Total revenues for the period were $11,235,033 and total expenditures were $16,587,581, leaving an adjusted ending fund balance of $16,769,918, of which $3.6 million is in general fund. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I open it to entertain a motion.
I move for approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. And this I open it for any discussion for the financial statement for May 2018. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tax collection report, May 2018, 4.9, item.
Item 4.9 is a tax collection report for May 2018. The 2017 total adjusted tax levy was $20,53,350.46 and the amount of collections as of May 31, 2018 is $19,42,254.90, which represents 94.96% of the total tax levy. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I will entertain a motion. I move, we have a motion, second, to accept the tax collection report for May 2018. I open it for further discussion. No discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Venda.
Thank you.
4.10, request for proposal for the 911 emergency ambulance services. Mr. Cardozo?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. The Office of Emergency Management is seeking authorization to request for 911 proposals. The current contract with Medicare EMS will expire July 19 of 2018. Staff and City Manager recommend approval.
I move for approval.
Move approvals. Do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, and it'll open it for discussion, but before we discuss the, before we take a vote, I would like to ask the legal, one of the things that I know that July 19, 2018 expires the contract, we are not going to be able to, to get the process in place for the bids and so forth. How can we extend it an additional 30 days after that, sir?
So, Mayor, I did have an opportunity to review the contract. Although contractually, there's nothing that obligates them to an extension, our purchasing director will be reaching out to the Medicare to see if they will agree to a 30-day extension. And in the process, we're going to be inviting that same vendor to, to participate in this process. So we don't anticipate any issues with the 30-day extension. However, if for some reason there is an issue, we do have a contract with a backup provider. Hidalgo County EMS would be our provider during that transition.
And to make it clear, we, we don't need to have a council meeting to, to be able to upgrade them from a, from a backup to a, to a primary if they decide not to?
That's correct. They automatically kick in as the primary when the, when the primary is unavailable. And, and a termination of contract would make them by default unavailable.
I just want to make sure that we don't, that we do have a 911, a 911 emergency ambulance services at all times.
Yes, sir.
24/7 in Mission. You know, appreciate that. And this, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cardozo. 11, authorize to request proposal for engineering service regarding? 11, authorize to request proposal for engineering services regarding drainage assessment. Mr. Salinas.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Come before you, requesting authorization to seek proposals and statement of qualifications from professional engineering firms for the purpose of performing a drainage assessment throughout the City of Mission. Staff and city manager recommend approval.
I will entertain a motion. I move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to entertain the request for proposal for engineering services, and I'll open it for discussion. In the discussion phase, I would like to add that in the scope of work, please add that whoever you hire, that they do face-to-face interviews with people like the ones that came, the two individuals that came here, you should be able to get their name and address from the record and to do a spot check at at least 80% of our city, you know, from the four quadrants of the city, please send the direct input from the citizens as far as that is concerned, and then to come up with the status of our drainage system currently and what are the recommendations for the future. If there's a future vision to take, let's do the next 10 years.
That's your plan, yes.
Any other scope of work that any of the council persons would like to see that this engineer would address for us?
As long as it's comprehensive, I think.
Comprehensive?
Comprehensive, that's my.
A real gate, any? This I open it for voting, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Salinas. 4.12, approval of ordinance number? 4647, approving the vacating and abandoning of 20-foot right-of-way, Mr. Cervado, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Item 4.12 is an approval of an ordinance that would abandon or vacate and abandoning a 20-foot street right-of-way located adjacent to the north line of Lot 4, Yule subdivision. This property is located near the northwest corner of School Lane in Ragland. The survey here shows what we're talking about. There's a 20-foot section along the north side of Lot 4 that the applicant is requesting that we abandon. He owns Lot 33, which is to the north of Sheraland Orchard subdivision, and he's in the process of building a large estate-style home on Lot 33, but he wants to utilize Lot 4 to construct an accessory building. There was, however, if you go to the next exhibit, Yule subdivision was a three-lot subdivision, and it's just below the red line here, these three lots, and it had a 20-foot section for a street that never really did develop. They set aside 20 feet for an additional or for a future street that would connect onto Glasscock, but this never developed, and we're requesting that the 20-foot section of this Lot Number 4 be abandoned. Staff is recommending approval, as is our city manager. Item 4.12 is now before you.
And this I open it for, and entertain a motion to approve ordinance 4647?
So that little strip, it doesn't have, doesn't give anyone access to their property?
Not going to block anybody?
It does give rear access to the property owners of the first two lots, and we're going to be leaving the remaining 20 feet intact for those two lots. It's just the lot that's further in that we're doing the abandonment to.
They own that lot?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes.
This lot right here.
Right, so they own the lot where they're building a 9,000-square-foot home, and they own this lot, the last lot to the west, right? And so the abandonment part would be just those 20 feet from that end to that end. So the other two adjoining neighbors will still have those 20 feet that they might want to use in the future or, you know, as an alleyway or to get back there to their property. That's correct.
Okay, is there?
Are you satisfied with it?
Well, are they going to be, is this going to be a one-lot subdivision eventually? Or is this a lot, already a lot?
It's already plotted. Yule subdivision is already plotted. We're just abandoning a 20-foot section.
The site location, that particular lot, which is a big lot?
Yes.
Where they're going to be building the 9,000-square-foot home?
Yes.
Is that a lot? Is that a legal lot?
That's a legal lot currently, yes.
How many acres is that?
I don't know the exact square footage. In looking at the aerial, I would say that it's more than an acre.
So this is Lot 4?
But he's still going to keep, or do you want him to still going to keep the other lot as a separate property?
No.
It won't be combined as one?
He's not going to replat, no. It'll be a separate property, correct.
And this is Lot 4?
By looking at the survey, Jaime, can you be able to identify the lots? I know we're talking about Lot 4, so is Lot 4 the location of where the new construction is taking place? And if so, what is the other adjacent lot? What is the actual?
The one next to it is Lot 5, and then you have Lot 6 of Yule subdivision. Lot 6 is the one that fronts Ragland. So if you go down further south, and you can't see it on the aerial, but you have Lots 1, 2, and 3 that front School Lane, and then as you go north, you have Lots 4, 5, and 6. So Lots 5 and 6 will retain the 20-foot street right-of-way.
I guess my concern is, if we go back to the other, okay, so Lot 5, you see the pool on that?
That's on Lot 6.
That's Lot 6, and the one just next to that is Lot 5?
Just west of it is Lot 5, correct.
And so then it's Lot 4?
4, the one that we're abandoning here today.
So further on down the road, if he decides to, if they decide to sell Lot 4, I guess they would have to reactivate that street. Is that correct? In order to sell it.
In order to sell it, because they wouldn't have access, correct.
And can we put that in the conditions?
We could make it part of the conditions, yes. We could have them sign an indemnification or some type of an agreement.
Yes, because they could very easily sell that later on.
Especially if we keep the front inch, if we keep those 20 feet on the two adjacent lots.
Right. Okay.
All right, so as long as they revert back to the city upon sale?
There you go.
Yes, we can make that a condition of approval.
Okay. So if that's a motion, I'll second that.
Is there any concerns from legal on that?
With regards to that item, I did list it on the agenda, just in case the council had questions as possibly going into executive session with regards to legal advice under 551-0712 and also under the real estate exception, 551.072. Should the council have any questions, legal questions regarding the ramifications of vacating at this point?
I move, I so move to go into executive session.
Second.
We have a motion and second to be able to go to executive session, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are moving to executive session, and the recommendation of legal.
Put it back on the record.
Like to entertain a motion for reconvening.
So moved.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We are reconvening for item 4.12, approval of ordinance 4647. At this time, I would like to ask our attorney to give us the information that we need.
Yes, Mayor. If the council wishes to take action on item 412, we would need a motion to approve ordinance number 4647 approving the vacating and abandoning of a 20-foot street right-of-way located adjacent to the north line of Lot 4, Yule subdivision, as shown on the survey plat attached. That motion is conditioned upon Lot 4 and Lot 33 of John H. Sherry subdivision being the same, one and the same owner, that those two lots being joined as one lot.
So moved.
We have a motion, do I hear a second?
Second.
We have a motion and second, and this I open it for final discussion. Any discussions? Questions, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries, the ordinance 4647 passed. 5.0, unfinished business, we have none at this 6.0 routine matters. 6.1, city manager's comments, Mr. Garza.
Yes, Mayor, just to take the opportunity really to thank all the, our first responders. As you know, we had heavy rains that came in on early Saturday morning hours. Reported in the first four hours was seven inches of rain, and throughout the rainfall, we ended up experiencing more than 14 inches of rain throughout the City of Mission, but we're very grateful to have great directors and great employees to be able to do rescues, which was our first priority, and then evac, the evacuations. If I'm not mistaken, we dealt with a total of 308 rescue slash evacuations that we did throughout the city. They were placed in a safe haven location, which was a Parks and Recreation Department, where we got assistance through Joanne, our director, and Adela also from the food pantry in serving those people. No later than noon, I believe, we already had the Red Cross that had opened up the permanent temporary shelter that was used to accommodate a total of about 40 individuals, approximately eight families that we went to visit, and so, again, very grateful for all the staff that mobilized quickly. You know, one of the things that we're working on right now that is, which is huge for us to move forward, is making sure that we advise the public the importance of reporting the damages that they have in their homes. If we send staff around driving through the subdivisions, it is going to be, you know, impossible for us to come up with a total amount of value of the estimates, only because some of those damages are inside your home and it's very difficult for us to get, but there is a threshold of about 38 million for the five counties who have been declared disaster, and so it is important that we participate in our website that we put out through Facebook as well, on a questionnaire to be able to estimate the damages that our residents received individually at their home. It's important that we spread the word, that we advise our families, that we advise our neighbors to make sure that they fill out that form so we can be able to provide the proper dollar amount, so hopefully we can reach that threshold with the assistance of the other four counties and be able to bring FEMA assistance down here to our region. You know, once again, I think, and all together, very pleased with our staff and the response, and it's been non-work since, you know, Thursday, early morning hours till today. Our director for our sanitation department is not here because he's actually on a truck himself, and we're picking up debris. We've been doing that since Saturday morning. I know our health department is working on making sure that we have the proper weather to be able to do for the mosquito spraying. I know we did some granules at the same time to try to prevent the breeding of mosquitoes, and so working together is the only way that we're going to get through this. I'm very, very happy with not only our staff, but it's amazing how the citizens have also participated in making sure that they provide the proper word and encouragement to not only our staff but our families who have been affected. And so on behalf of yourself, Mayor, and on behalf of the council, I want to thank our staff and the entire community to, you know, that have been able to work together closely with the City of Mission to get through this, and that's the only way we're going to do that.
Thank you, Martine. Of course, on behalf of the citizens of Mission, I want to echo the same thing for the first responders and everybody else that came in from Hidalgo County and the state of Texas to render aid in time of need. Obviously, we experienced something in Mission that in my lifetime, you know, I haven't had that kind of experience, and I'm very familiar with emergency operations in my careers, both at La Jolla and the City of Mission in the 42 years that I've been under emergency operations. Now, having said that, you know, my hat's off to them, you know, we're going to continue, we're going to continue recovery. I want to echo the importance of this form that we need to fill out, because without this information, the FEMA works on data, and if the data is not given to FEMA, then the opportunities for individual assistance as well as for public assistance is not going to be there. Those are the rules and regulations we have to follow, you know, and obviously, the governor has told me already that he is ready to ask for the declaration through FEMA to the President of the United States, but he's not going to go with a shorthand of data. So I'm asking the public to please give us the information. I know there was a lot of vehicles out there that were abandoned, a lot of vehicles in residence that had damages, like Mr. Garza said about the inside of your houses and so forth. Please let us know, and especially those, I know I've met a lot of people that have told me that they don't have flood insurance. What do they do? How do we get, how do we get the funding? And the only way we can get public assistance and individual assistance is to be able to meet those thresholds as required by law. And, you know, and that is what it is. We were blessed, we had no fatalities, we had no major injuries. We just had normal operation, normal incidents through the police department, normal incidents with the party department, and normal incidents with EMS, which is a regular day for the City of Mission. So fortunately, we did not have any fatalities and nobody got hurt. I even got a chance to see a four-week baby in the safe haven that we rendered aid to that family, you know, and she was sound asleep, and fortunately, her name is Faith, you know, so her, you know, just that gives you the message that God has sent to us, you know, as far as that is concerned. Now, I do want to add, last city council meeting, that was the first city council meeting that we went live on Facebook. Now we added our, assigned interpreters to our organization, and I want to welcome you all for, both of you, and they're a joint effort. There's going to be multiple people that are going to be coming in and assisting us in this matter, so everybody can be all-inclusive in the City of Mission, and anybody that's at home can, that has difficulties and disabilities, that they will be able to understand our city council, and it is part of the transparency that this council and this mayor has pledged to bring to Mission. Not that we did not have transparency before, but we're going to get as much as we can to stay live so people can be able to see what's going on in our city on a daily fashion. And then that leads me to another item that we have now. Now we have city council comments, and I would like to start from place four and go down the line. Place four, I open it for your city council comments, so now that it's on the agenda, last agenda, I had to share the agenda item, but now we put it on the agenda for the purpose of being as legal as possible.
Thank you, Mayor. I think our city manager said it best, so I just want to reaffirm that. And it was a lot of water, but we got through it.
Place three.
Basically going to say that just I'm very grateful to live in this city with, that our staff is just so wonderful, and I have had the opportunity to work with other people in other cities, and maybe I'm a little biased, but I think y'all are the best.
Place two.
The same here. I want to thank the staff and let's thank God, because it could have been worse. I really think that Mission is a Christian community, and we had a lot of people praying. Yeah, some people were affected, but I know Joe did a great job. Our church got a call from 700 Club, and they sent a truckload of water, cleaning supplies, snacks, and all, to help our community, so the eyes of God are over this community, and thank God for that.
Amen.
Amen. Place one.
Hi. So I just want to say I was very proud, you know, there was a lot of pictures through the devastation of our city, but one picture that I was very proud of on Facebook was a picture of our city manager and our mayor actually shoveling sand, and I think that that's just what our community needed to see, and I just want us all to give them a round of applause, because that just shows the type of leaders that we have. Thank you for that. And then, of course, I have one more thing. We all have seen this national attention on the immigration matter, and not only is it a federal issue, but it's also a humanity issue. I do care, and I'm hoping that my colleagues would join me. As a community, we need to demand better, demand more, be active, and participate, and I hope that you will join me in that fight. Thank you.
Thank you. On the same light, calling back to the mayor's comment, Mr. Garza and I attended a, a meeting with the Senator Corney and Senator Cruz on the same issue that you were talking about and we, we did advise them that Mission is a faith-based community and that we feel that humanitarian, humanitarian services need to be rendered and that, that the removal of children from their parents is a traumatic event and that, that they need to provide the appropriate counseling, the appropriate counseling for, for those individuals. Just think about it, they've, you know, and I was, when I was sitting around the table there with, with them, I, I said, what would have happened if I was five years old and I would have been taken away from my parents? You know, they were my safety, safety net, you know, all the time, you know, and so, so based on that, you know, I, I do want to let you, the, the community know that we did attend the meeting in Westlake and that we did communicate to them to go back to Washington DC and to let them know that the family unit is a very valuable tool in Mission and that we need to promote it and continue to, to foster it so that, that our beliefs and values of a conservative community that we are is promoted and, and done on a daily basis. Without that, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
More to adjourn.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.